Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronine.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here. We have a scout troop with us tonight. Somebody want to introduce the group or tell us who you are and why you're here?
We are with Troop 188 out of Good Shepherd. We are working on our citizenship in the community merit badge. And so we need to attend a city council meeting. We've already had Robin come and visit with us about stuff within the city that he does. And so we are just here to observe tonight.
Okay, traditionally, we have the scout troop when they're here lead us in the pledge of allegiance that we do before every meeting. So if you all want to do that, lead us in the pledge, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we need a motion to approve last week's minutes, please.
It's approved.
Motion Johnson and second by Slate Hanson. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Nobody signed up for open forum. We have just three items on our consent count, or A, B, and C. We need a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Remley, second by Lunsman Carl. We have a person on the phone, so we'll need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Under new business, Northeast Council of Governments joint cooperative agreement for the upcoming year, possible approval by the committee. Who's presenting that? What department is this coming from?
Carl. Carl. Typically, it comes from me, but it's a standard agreement that we sign every year with the Northeast Council of Governments, just allowing them to work jointly with them on any projects that we might have come up during the year.
Who approval?
Second.
Motion Bunsonus, second by Olson. Any questions, anyone?
So in the annual meeting, Carl, or the annual report that you sent out, I think their budget is somewhere around $500,000.
Yeah.
What is, in this, the counties and the cities give around 150. What makes up the difference of?
Good question. I'll talk to Eric about that.
Okay. Thank you.
The other questions? Roll call, please. Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is the list of bills, and I don't know if it's in my packet here.
Whoop.
I'm looking, but I don't see it. Oh, there it is. There it is. All right. We have these bills presented for payment tonight. Bills payable for 2018, I'm assuming that's from city departments, 434,128. Bills from 2019, 30,805. Northwest Energy Utility, 75,412. Airport tractors to Deering Company, 54,837. Dakota Supply cartridges for city bathroom sinks, $68. American News charges for ad publications, 2564. Northern Electric Utility, 6838. Western Area Power charges at Ordway, 4122. UPS charges, $30. Sales tax to Department of Revenue, 9486. Flowers from the Boston Fern, $65. G and R controls, room temperature sensor at the airport, $146. Vinyl logo at the airport doors to Midstates Printing, $490. U.S. Bank principal and interest payment, $376,420. Northern Valley cellphone charges, 92. Refunds on utility accounts, 120. Clark Engineering payment for groundwater expansion, 2983. And wastewater fee to the state, $25,000.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Bunsonus. Questions on any of the bills? Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronine.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. That brings us to the city manager's report. We'll turn it over to you, Lynn.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm trying something a little different this evening. We just hardwired this table, so I just wanted to make certain that it worked for people in the future. Previously, you had to work through Wi-Fi, and sometimes they lost connection when they were making presentations. So this is something new, so I thought I'd just sit down here on a temporary basis. But getting to the point, at the November 19 city council meeting, Robin listed seven potential projects for the next street renovation or reconstruction project for 2020. And I believe, I believe two other street areas were added to the discussion for consideration, and that was Dakota Street North and Melgar between 281 and 5th Street South.
Do we have that on screen?
Pardon?
It's not showing up on our screens.
Oh, I was gonna go to my memo when I got to that point. This is just the opening before I get to my actual memo.
That's the way we pay attention to it.
Yeah, we're, we're on the edge of our seat waiting for the video to come on.
Okay. So we were talking about a total of nine projects, and the majority of the city engineers listed projects were located within the city core. A portion of the mentioned projects were in undeveloped jurisdictional border areas. Robin indicated that the city was going to reconstruct the street, the city should consider utility improvements. And so that put us in kind of a unique situation, because most of the time with our core projects being in the center, it's not an issue where people already have utilities and they've already paid for utilities. But with a couple of those projects you're talking about, they're sitting on the borderline between corporate limits and county. And most of those were on developed areas. And so if in fact you were going to put improvements in it, does the council have interest in recovering cost, or do they only have interest in getting the project done, and they don't care about recovering costs? And so there's two ways of addressing that, as I just stated. One is option one, limit or no cost recovery. Essentially, add the cost of the utility improvements to the cost of the street reconstruction. A direct cost to sales tax allocation would happen with that type of program. The last such effort for utility extension outside the core area was probably 8th Avenue Northeast between County Highway 14 and 19. But keep in mind, a large portion of this utility extension was financed by a federal grant. So it wasn't as though we were really financing it, but was our first time exploring going kind of outside the corporate boundaries, where you had a water main and sewer main, where on the south side you had the corporate limits, and on the north side you had the county limits. So you could do it that way, where option one, you just cover it as part of the cost of the improvement. And option two is cost recovery efforts. And this is what we'd like to discuss tonight. We'd like to explain some of our existing programs and other system resources that we found when we started researching this particular project, because we knew that there was interest in looking at Melgar Road. And in both cases, whether you go to the far west, which is between 281 and 5th, or if you go over by the school district and go up to Walmart, both of those are not totally within corporate limits. Half of the roadway is within the county. So we have four areas of discussion relating to partial new development cost recovery and local growth management. One of the tools that we presently have is what we call a system development charge. This fee by the City of Aberdeen was established in 1978 by ordinance 1480, and is charged to individuals who tap into the city's water system. The fee is charged to help fund system-wide costs associated to water distribution. Ordinance 1480 is without definition for the imposed system development charge. You know, most of the time when we do an ordinance, there's always definitions applied as to what the true meaning of a particular fee is. If you go back and I give you the copy of ordinance 1480, you'll see that it doesn't make any reference to a definition at all. So just letting you know that. Another area that we found of interest was plating fees. The city of Sioux Falls utilizes fee methods which recover payment to fund arterial streets and water distribution lines when land is divided for the purpose of sale, transfer of ownership, or creating a building site prior to the issuance of a building permit. So they have a specific program. It's called plating fees, somewhat similar to our system development charge, but they expanded a little bit, where they went beyond just water, where they have what they're calling, they want you to participate in the cost of an arterial upgrade. So let's say if in fact you had a subdivision where you have the roadways within the subdivision, they are residential only. Let's say the roadway going to the subdivision acts as a primary carrier for that subdivision and others. The city of Sioux Falls has turned around and saying, okay, because of this development, we're going to charge you back a portion of that arterial street cost to make the system work. Oversizing, this is another tool that we presently have. Aberdeen's Planning and Zoning Commission may require the installation of water mains, sewer mains, and roadways that are in excess of a newly created subdivision's actual design needs to accommodate future growth. So right within our ordinance for water, sewer, and storm sewer, it specifically states that we have the ability to do cost participation if in fact we want an overbuild so we don't short ourselves for extension in the future where a particular subdivision is. Another thought that we talked about in reference to potential development is allocate a, do a reserve account. Allocate a certain portion of the annual sales tax dollars into an infrastructure reserve account. These monies would be allocated to promote development within these areas defined within the city's growth plan. The city council then could determine the investment for the best community impact. So that was just kind of an outline of the four different areas that we looked at that, you know, they include present and possible tools. Now, when we go and we go further into cost recover development options, we thought about potentially expanding the city's current system development charts. As I stated, this fee was adopted in 1978. This fee has not changed since 2004. And the average annual fee collected since 2004 has been $116,000. City Finance Officer Carl Alberts calculated if we were to pose a new development fee that would include wastewater and storm water at 50% of the existing water development fee, that the city would collect $174,000 annually. So we would go from 116 to 174. And so I've given you some examples of that fee. For example, if you take a new residential development, that fee, that system development fee is based upon the size of your water main. Can you use your screen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you took a new residential development, 40 lots would generate approximately $72,000. If you go and use TIF 26 as an example, there's 54 lots included within this subdivision. The current development fee would generate 64,000. If you made sewer and storm sewer 50% increase off the existing fee, then it would generate approximately 97,200. So it's just a thought. We're not saying that this is the way to go, but we're just trying to lay out different scenarios for you. You may be comfortable with just the way the system is, but if in fact you want to be more aggressive, maybe this will bring back discussions after my presentation. You got a question, Dave?
So basically, including wastewater and storm water in that calculation increases the fee.
Correct. So as you can see, our current system development charge, you know, if you have an inch and a quarter copper pipe coming into your home to service your home, that system development charge is $1,200. If in fact you had an inch and a half, it'd be $1,600. And so this fee was established in 2004, and the thought process behind it when it was established would offset the system improvements that you couldn't directly charge back to the residents. What do I mean by system improvements? For example, if Robin had to change a transmission line to a water tower, if in fact he had to do upgrades within a water tower, those costs are never charged back to the individuals, and that's how the system development charge helps fund some of those costs.
Do we waive these development charges in certain cases?
In the amount of time that I've been here, we've only waived it once.
Okay.
That I know of. And that was because AGP, there was a package that was put together that involved several different incentives, not only from the state but from the city. But for the most part, these have always been imposed.
Could you go back to the top of the page, so we can look at those four options again? Okay, system development charge, plating fees. Right now, we do the system development charge. We don't do any of the others. The other three are new proposed programs.
Well, the plating fees is the city of Sioux Falls program that I was going to speak about, and then the oversize, we currently do. And then I was going to talk about the reserve account, which we don't do.
So, but to clarify, the oversizing we do, but when someone does the oversizing, we pay for the oversight. So we pay the difference between what they would have done and what they're, what we're asking them to do. So that's not an additional fee on that developer. That's something we're paying out of our funds. Okay. So, but the system development charge is something that we charge the developer. Is that right?
The property owner. For each parcel that's built upon, then the system development charge is charged against that parcel.
So it's like levied against their taxes or part of their taxes, or?
Part of the building permit.
Building permit. Thank you. Okay. So, okay.
So with that, then I'll go on to what the city of Sioux Falls does, and they call their fee not system development charge, but they call it plating fees. And I made reference to this in my November 28 city manager's report, that the city of Sioux Falls utilizes impact fees to help spur and fund arterial streets and water distribution systems in newly developing areas of the city. The last distribution system planning fee study update was completed by Duncan and Associates in 2015, 2016 for 17,500. And then Duncan Associates completed their first study for the city of Sioux Falls in 2008 before the city implemented plating fees to fund newly developed areas of the city. And Duncan Associates has drafted over 340 impact fee stays for more than 100 clients in 22 states. And Ron can give you the reason why he believes that they probably used Duncan Associates to come up with an impact fee. Ron, would you like to talk about that briefly?
Sure. This does get a little complicated, but these types of fees can implicate potential takings types, arguments. So states throughout the nation have developed a set of criteria by which that they, they can require a municipality to conduct what they call nexus studies, to connect a fee to a particular land. South Dakota does not have that in place, but it is something I think Sioux Falls must have utilized in their process, and they, essentially they're just putting together a study that tries to connect a, a cost that the municipality is incurring to a particular acreage of land. And that's how that, that's how that language works. And again, because South Dakota doesn't have that, that in place, we're kind of doing it prophylactically as we, as we look through that, that we're making sure that we are at least recognizing potential constitutional issues in this process.
Okay, so moving on, I gave you a listing of the city of Sioux Falls fees with the table. And as you can see, their street fee was 2,000 for a single-family lot, and their water plating fee was 1,900. So a total of 3,994, which is roughly double the amount that we're collecting within Aberdeen. And then I also showed what an industrial lot cost would be, as well as an office institute. And then I kind of went through and explained their mythology that was used to, on their prototype sections of land. So for example, on the street, 30% of the arterial street cost section of land is divided by the number of trips generated by a section of land developed by the citywide average determined cost trip. And so they went through a very complex formula to determine how, what that arterial street upgrade cost to charge it back to that subdivision. The water mythology was based upon the cost to serve a prototype section of land. Water distribution costs to serve a section of land is divided by the number of developable acres sections to determine the cost an acre. So this is just something that they did, and being that they're fairly aggressive in what they've done, and I couldn't find anyone else that's went into impact fees, that's why I brought this information forward to you. Keep in mind, when they established their impact fees, most of their fees are based upon factual city information, including multifamily projects over a million dollars. And like Ron said, they had to have a justifiable cause when they started these impact fees. And so they have the database to back it up. I contacted Duncan Associates on December 17th and asked them if in fact they were to come to Aberdeen and do an impact study, what would be, you know, a ballpark estimate? And they said if in fact we were interested in doing that, it would be approximately $50,000 with associated transportation costs. So I just wanted you to know about that. And then I also, within my letter, I put, "In my opinion, I'm not certain the city of Aberdeen has the financial wherewithal to initially carry the costs for numerous developing areas for a period of years, thus waiting for future development to charge out the costs." And Sioux Falls is a little different than we are. I mean, if you take, for example, one of the improvement projects that Robin showed, if he showed the actual costs for the utilities for just what I would call the west section of Melgar Road up to the curve from the school district, the utilities were $800,000. Would that break the city? No. But if I had four or five projects like that, that would put us in a unique circumstance. So I just wanted you to know, even though that impact fee's there, I don't know if we have the finances to carry, you know, a program, a stated program where people could come in and say, I want to apply for this program, because I don't know if we have the wherewithal to do that. But it is a thought process.
Lynn, in regards to these plating fees, when is that fee charged? Is that charged at the building permit, or is that?
Yep.
Assessed, okay.
Well, if you go back to my opening, it says, okay, plating fee, which requires payment to fund arterial streets and water distribution lines when the land is divided for the purpose of sale, transfer of ownership, or in creating a building permit site prior to the issuance of a building permit. So they must collect it at the same time that they issue the building permit, similar to what we do.
So, so in that case, that falls on the developer, and then the developer would have the?
Not necessarily. That could be the individual coming in for the building permit.
For the house building permit?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, oversizing. As I indicated, our ordinance is, in section 48, 128, allow, there's language states to follow, the Planning and Zoning Commission may require the installation of water mains, sanitary sewer lanes, lines, and storm sewer lines which are in excess of the subdivision design needs mutually established with the subdivisions or prorated distribution of costs to be shared. Well, you should also know, South Dakota Codified Law, Chapter 15, 18C4, in summary, allows water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer lines or mains, including street costs, whereas the city requires the size of such lines and roadways be larger than developers' requirements. The price difference paid by the municipality and as determined by the licensed engineer estimates is exempt from public agency procurement, general provisions. So the state law in its stealth says when we do this oversize, we don't have to bid it, because we can take the engineer's estimate from the other project and just update the numbers. So if you were ever wondering where we're talking about that, where we're getting it from, it's within our ordinance, and it's also within state law. So that works pretty well for us. Our language is somewhat lacking on the street side. It's very specific. I gave you copies of the sections in reference to the water and sanitary sewer and storm sewer. It's quite specific. So when we do the codification, I asked Ron if he could update the street section. So it reads a little clearer, just like the rest of the other provisions within. Okay, the last thought process was, the city has no code permissions regarding carrying infrastructure costs for speculative development with hopes to recapture a portion of costs when developed. We had some discussions on establishing a reserve account to promote future development by allocating an annual portion of the sales tax and letting the city council determine a possible investment percentage with staff recommendations. This option approach doesn't include a fee recovery approach, but would place the decision with the governing body. So those are four areas that we talked about that kind of pertain to Robin's bomb that he dropped on us about two months ago. Any thoughts from the council?
So this $50,000 for the study, do they give an idea of what fees would be in this general area? I look at the Sioux Falls fees, and to me, I would think those were quite high for the Aberdeen area.
I did not go that far.
Okay.
That would have required some cost allocation I wasn't willing to pay for at this time. I wanted to bring it up to the council, because I didn't know, even if in fact we had supporting documentation, if the council's even interested in going that route.
I'd be interested in hearing from developers, if, the fact that we would perhaps aggressively and affirmatively expand into areas we otherwise wouldn't, since we have these fees, whether that would make them more likely to do development, or if the extra charges come back to them, if that would make them less likely, because it cuts into their margins. So I think it would be interesting if we were going to discuss this as a council, to have some developers either voluntarily, or maybe we invite to show up to tell us what they think.
Well, I can tell you from my perspective, being on the board of a developer, that, and knowing how tight TIFs are getting with the costs, development costs, that any of these extra fees that would go on to the developer are going to make it even tighter. I mean, it's obviously, they're going to make it that much tighter, and it's going to make it that much harder to continue to do the development that we're seeing in our community. And then the ones, while I really like the idea of the plating fees, because I've always thought Sioux Falls had the right approach on that, as I'm looking at that, and I'm thinking about the housing that we're trying to provide in our community for low-income or workforce housing, you throw a $3,000 or $4,000 building permit charge on, and that's going to make it a lot harder for those folks to be able to get into a house. I mean, boy, I'm just thinking about that for me. $3,000 thrown onto the building permit charge for a new home is, is going to change things. So I appreciate this opportunity to have this conversation, and I'm definitely going to sit down, bring it up at, at our next development meeting, and see if the other folks around the table would agree with me. But that's, that's my first blush, is, is that's gonna, that's gonna make things, that's gonna change things. It will change the future development. I mean, it doesn't, I'm not saying it's going to stop things, but it, you know, we might see it slow down a little bit with that. And so that does definitely have to be part of our big conversation.
Well, like I said at the beginning, this was just alternatives. If in fact you wanted to be a little bit more proactive, it's not, nowhere did I state this is necessary, but we just laid out what options and what our current tools were. I do know that I will ask the council in the future to at least consider a CPI increase with our current system development charge, being it hasn't been changed since 2004. I know we're going backwards on that charge.
Go ahead.
Appreciate all this information. Very useful. I find the new reserve account to be an attractive option here. It spreads it a little more generally. It doesn't stifle thought of development by channeling those fees to a specific and small subset. I like the fact that we're banking money for future plans, and then guided by department heads, the council has flexibility to determine what some of those numbers are, how aggressive we are in putting money from sales taxes into an account.
So Jennifer was using $3,000 additional. I don't see it as $3,000 additional. I think the staff, or the development charge would go away if we're doing plating fees, or I don't.
It'd be reduced.
It'd be reduced?
Yeah.
The reserve account, where would you find that money? Which projects would, which projects would suffer because of? Which projects would, which projects would suffer because of, we're setting aside money?
I was only thinking of an allocation of about 200,000 per year. So, you know, in a five-year period, you know, that could be a million dollars, which might be significant, because for the most part, like when I was talking to Brett, because he's working with this growth plan, our development hasn't been significant as far as it's spanning outside the corporate limits. Am I correct in saying that? And so I don't see these projects showing up every year, but I think there's going to be some of these projects that are, you're going to see within the next decade.
Carl, was it permissible to use utility account money to contribute to a reserve account, or does that have to?
If it was specific. Thank you, Mayor. If it was specific to the improvements that benefited that particular utility.
Okay. Well, you know, in this case, we're, we're talking about water and sewer, you know, so some of that money could come there, particularly if we ended up with a, more money in our, in what we've accumulated in, in any of our enterprise funds.
Yes, in, in the cost allocation methodology, though, then you're basically charging your current customers for future development, which is not unusual.
Or we're charging our current taxpayers with a, with sale tax money, you know, so.
At the same point, those future techs, or future water users will be paying into the fund as well.
Yeah.
I, like I said, I think there's a lot of things that come to my mind, especially like, it may, you may seem like it's 3,000 more per lot, but when we put in Melgar and we run the water sewer and stub it off on certain areas for streets, the developer is not paying for that cost, I would assume, except through any future development charges or whatever we come up with. So that would typically be a savings over what we currently do now, correct? Okay, so they're not running, you know, a line, let's say, from the high school all the way out to a few, a certain area for development that right now we would make them pay for, we would essentially do it for them, which would kind of be a...
Well, and some of those costs right now, let's say, we'll use that, the new Happy subdivision up north, there was some extension that had to be done from the JN subdivision up to the Happy subdivision. That became part of their TIF. That would come off their TIF and be done in a different way. You're, you're paying for it one way or the other. It, it may be coming off the TIF to make the TIF maybe pay out easier, maybe not cut it quite as tight, but then you'd be charging it out on a platting fee or some other method system development charge.
Okay. Where does that money we currently collect for the water development charge go now? Goes in the water fund? So we don't separate that out, it just goes into the mix of everything? Okay. So, because like I say, I, I don't think we ever recoup every, all the costs, but, you know, platting fees, to me, you know, what Sioux Falls does, they're, they're growing by leaps and bounds all the time. I don't think we're looking at that. But I don't think it ever, even with platting fees, they'd be so high, they'd be a lot higher than a 35 or 5,000 for commercial than, because we're just not adding hundreds upon hundreds of lots at a time.
Yeah, would we be annexing the people on East Melgar Road, the ones that are?
No, no.
That, this, this, this wouldn't include them?
No, no.
Okay. They would have to ask to be annexed.
Correct. But there are few people over there that would like to be annexed. So I just brought that up for that reason.
Anybody else?
Lynn, do you see value in doing a study?
At first I did, but then when I started thinking about, you know, what our total fee would be, you know, even though, you know, an impact fee of 1,200 to 1,600 is our existing fee, you know, would that fee double, or would it only be 50%? I, I don't know. I don't have the money in the 2019 budget for an activity like this, but it might not hurt for us to have someone come in and give us a different perspective, being that they've drafted over 340 impact studies for 100 different clients. I know that they've worked with larger cities, and I know that they've worked with smaller cities, and so it might help us look at things in a different way, but then it comes back to, no matter what you calculate, who's going to pay the fee? And so are you willing to go that step, or are you comfortable with their present system?
Well, I, yeah, oh. I think you indicated, Lynn, that we haven't updated our fees since 2004.
Right.
I think in 15 years, we're probably quite a bit behind the current standards, and so I think that's one of the first things we need to address is, is to update the current fees that we have in place.
I understand that. Matter of fact, I think that suggestion would come from Carl and I.
Okay.
I also think that it was kind of, I mean, we collect it for water, but, you know, considering the cost of, you know, running a sewer and a storm sewer system, that'd be something that we should probably look at also.
Mayor?
Yes.
And one of the things, just to make sure that everyone's aware of this, any type of fee that we're looking at, I don't think it's Lynn's intent that we collect 100% of what our expenses would be. It would only be a portion of what we're spending. I think, Lynn, what did you say? You calculated that Sioux Falls gets for a return on their platting fee?
Well, take for example their street, they're only taking 30% of the cost, trying to recapture 30% of the cost. And that 30% is the difference between a regular residential street versus an arterial, so without question about that.
So for, if that's the case, it might not be that discouraging for people who, instead of paying extra for a fee, would have the extra incentive of, of not having to pay as much to put it in themselves if they were, if that was the alternative. So, I would be interested in seeing if we hear from any developers on this and, and go, go forward. I, I would assume the consensus of the council is to, is to go forward to the update of the, of those fees from 2004 and bring that proposal to us. And I haven't heard anybody disagree with that, and, and other questions from people?
I, I would like to hear from Jeff Mitchell.
Good idea.
Of Happy. This will have a direct impact in their, like Jennifer stated.
He's probably putting the most lots out there at one time, so what would?
Well, and any, any people who potentially are thinking about those Melgar Road areas, and, you know, let's hear from them.
Great.
Yeah. Do, do we have a difference in fees now, like, let's say, someone who's bringing in a new piece of property to plat versus someone who maybe is replating an existing structure, it's all the same fee?
It varies on the size of the subdivision. If you bring in 10 lots, the fee is higher than if you're doing two. But it doesn't matter the type of lot, whether it's commercial or residential.
I have my meeting with the class one mayors on Wednesday, and if there's time at the meeting, I'll bring this up and see if anybody's got any ideas or anything to contribute. Anything else before we are done? Well, apologize some to the, to the Boy Scouts. This may have been, you know, it's in the top 10 of, of one of the most boring meetings we've had for Boy Scouts, I'm sure. For this, the subject matter has not been too exciting for people of Boy Scout age, but that, that's a good civics lesson for you. Government a lot of times is, is not all that exciting. So thank, but thanks for being here, and thanks for your patience. Anything else from the council before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion Remley, second by Bunsonus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.